Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the 7:30 September 10th meeting, regular meeting of Lynchburg City Council. Please stand for our invocation by Vice Mayor Dolan, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me as we bow our heads and pray in each of our own spiritual traditions. Creator of the universe, in prayer, once again we humbly come before you as we ask for your favor to remind us of our commitment to our community. We ask for the strength of the body, the broadening of the mind, the deepening of our compassion, and the inclusiveness of our deliberation and decisions. We ask that you be the wind in our back, the force of our wisdom, and the inspiration to open our minds, hearts, and souls with hope, vision, and clarity, so that we may represent all members of our community fairly. We thank you for the opportunity to save our -- to serve our community, and thank you for the community in which we serve. Let us be mindful of and express our gratitude for this extraordinary community in which we live, work, and pray -- play. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, for our recognitions, I'm going to come down to our podium, so. No problem. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. This evening, we are thrilled and we're honored to be able to recognize members of our Lynchburg Police Department and other staff who received the Department Valor Award. And this was presented to them previously by the Virginia Association Chiefs of Police. And tonight, we are recognizing them. And I will read while we are recognizing them. But first, I would like to call up Police Chief Zudema first, who will help me in making some more staff names and bringing up some more staff. But officers who received the Valor Award, Officer Miles Davis, and please come on up and we'll get you to stand up front. Practice your standing, because we're going to read a little bit, so just to let you know that. Officer Nick Kirby. Officer Thomas Sawyer. Officer Roy Young. And then those who could not be here this evening, but we want to recognize them also, is Officer Nathan Gottse and his K-9 partner, Arco. Now, to give you a little background on this, and I will ask Chief Zudema to also bring up the staff who's also present.
Thank you. Mayor Tweedy, Deputy Chief Mark Jamison, Deputy Chief Ken Edwards, Captain Dan Black, and Sergeant Joel Hinckley are here to support these officers tonight. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Chief Zudema. On August 27th, 2019, five Lynchburg Police Department officers and a Lynchburg Police Department K-9 received the Valor Award, which is the highest honor presented by the Virginia Association of Chiefs of Police and Foundation. We are incredibly proud of Officers Miles Davis, Nathan Gottse, Nick Kirby, Thomas Sawyer, Roy Young, and K-9 Arco, who received this award for their immense bravery and composure during a high-stakes incident on October 6th, 2018. On that date, Officers Kirby and Davis were dispatched to a residence for a subject brandishing a firearm. Both officers quickly located the suspect vehicle. They soon realized that there was also an alert out for the vehicle out of Campbell County and that the driver was a suspect in a homicide. Both officers attempted to initiate a felony stop on the vehicle just as Officer Young joined them on Campbell Avenue. The driver of the vehicle refused to stop and began to accelerate at a high rate of speed. The officers pursued the vehicle until into Campbell County, reaching speeds in excess of 100 miles per hour. The driver continued traveling at a high rate of speed before crashing his vehicle into the woods. The suspect immediately opened fire on the officers as they came to a stop behind him. Officers Kirby, Davis, and Young exited their vehicles and began to return fire. Officers Gottse and Sawyer arrived on scene just as shots were being fired. During the exchange of gunfire, Officer Kirby was struck in his right shoulder. Officer Sawyer assisted in moving him out of the line of fire and to a safe position where he could receive first aid. The suspect stopped firing his weapon, and Officer Gottse attempted to communicate with him to determine his position. Once it was determined that he was still in or near his vehicle, Officer Gottse deployed his K-9 partner, Arco, who was able to reach the suspect and apprehend him. Officer Gottse and Officer Young then moved forward to attempt to place the suspect in handcuffs. The suspect was wounded from the exchange of gunfire, but he still began to kick and hit K-9 Arco. The officers struggled to gain control of him as he fought them, but were eventually able to place him in custody. The offender was in the process of trying to locate and potentially harm someone else when these courageous officers intervened and apprehended him. So on behalf of Lynchburg City Council, our residents, just everyone in our city, we thank you for your bravery. We thank you for the jobs you do every day, for those who support you, for those who are in the supervisory positions, for the training, and we are honored to recognize you this evening. So for that, I want to shake your hand, and please give them a round of applause and And I would just like to give the chief a minute to say a few words about his officers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Tweedy. You know, the phone call you never want to get is that one of your officers or any of your officers have been hurt. And a phone call that got up about a year ago, most now, was that our officers had been involved in a shooting, and one of our officers had been shot, and my heart sunk. We quite bluntly were within an inch or so of Officer Kirby not being here with us. We talk a lot anecdotally in this profession and in this community about how our officers put their lives on the line. This is truly an example of what our officers do by putting their lives on the line. If you want to see what a hero looks like, and we use that word very loosely in our society today, if you want to see what a hero looks like, you look at these four officers up here and the other officer and K-9 partner that couldn't be here tonight, that's what a hero looks like. We should never, ever forget that. So, thank you. We appreciate your support of Lynchburg Police Department.[464.81][464.81][applause]
Thank you very much. And I do want to also recognize, while I take this minute and this moment, Chief Zudema. So, this was not on our agenda, but today, we received an email and information that Chief Zudema has been chosen for the inaugural class of the Civil Society Fellowship. So, community partners, including Lynchburg and our organization, are a critical part of the Lynchburg Police Department's success in maintaining a safe, enjoyable city for our residents and visitors to live, work, and play. Members of the LPD continually strive to develop a more comprehensive understanding of all perspectives to better serve our city. In keeping with this mission, the Civil Society Fellowship, a partnership of the Anti-Defamation League, or ADL, and the Aspen Institute, has selected Chief Ryan Zudema as a -- let me see, I lost place -- as a member of its inaugural class of fellows. The Fellowship seeks to develop more effective leaders who are committed to tackling today's societal changes. Over the course of three years, the fellows, who represent a broad spectrum of diverse perspectives, will engage in dialogue and experiential learning that will allow them to implement positive change in their communities and across the country. And as the press release says, "Chief Zudema looks forward to learning from leaders across the nation and sharing these perspectives with the department, other city leaders, and our community organizations." So I wanted to congratulate you for this opportunity and this appointment, so thank And thank you very much. Are there any other council members who would like to say a word or two? Councilmember Perrow?
You've got to stand up behind all these tall men. It's just, you guys just never cease to amaze me, all that you do in the forest. And I hadn't heard that much detail about that encounter before, and it was really something. So I just want to thank you, from the bottom of my heart, for all you have done for the city and all you will continue to do for the city. You really make us proud. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. I think Carrie got photos. Did you? All right. Thank you very much. Thank you all for coming down. All right. Thank you. Now, tonight's city council agenda is divided into three sections: consent agenda, public hearing, and general business. The first section is the consent agenda. This section includes routine items, and all items may be approved by one vote. Thank you. Thank you. There's a motion and a second. No discussion, please cast your vote. And the consent agenda passes seven to zero. Next are public hearings. This section includes all public hearings as required by law or as council may direct. I'll read the procedures. Staff will make a presentation. Comments will then be solicited from the public. An individual speaker shall have three minutes to speak. If the speaker represents a group, the speaker shall have five minutes. A speaker representing a group shall identify that group at the beginning of his or her remarks, and a group may have only one spokesperson. Each speaker shall clearly state his or her name and locality of residence. Upon the conclusion of public comments, the public hearing will be closed, and the matter to council for deliberation. Number nine, the public hearing regarding the petition of BHC Roads for a conditional use permit at 128 Old Courthouse Turnpike to allow the construction of a utility equipment shelter to support a fiber optic network in an R4 high-density residential district. I'll turn to Mr. Martin for the presentation.
Madam Mayor, members of council, as the petition stated, this would be for utility equipment shelters only. There would be no towers associated with the development. The planning commission conducted public hearings and recommended approval of the conditional use permitted at its July 24th meeting.
Thank you. Is there anyone to make a presentation? If not, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? All right. With no opposition, there's no rebuttal needed. The public hearing is closed, and the matter rests with council. Counsel, what is your pleasure?
Madam Mayor, in looking at this, it seems quite reasonable. This is a space, I don't know what else would be used for, quite honestly. I'm not sure what long-haul equipment is to support, excuse me, what a facility would be to support long-haul fiber equipment, fiber optic route. What is this? Is it a vehicles parked here, or is it kind of like a booster state? Is it an enclosure or a shed?
I did some research on it, enough to be dangerous, but it's something associated with a fiber optic network to support, I believe, Facebook. So it's basically a fiber optic route.
It's a building, so it's a route.
Oh, the building is, yes. So the fiber comes in, this boosts the signal, and it goes now.
That's okay. Hey, sounds great to me. It's a use for, honestly, a pretty unattractive space, and it looks like a good use. And you know what? There's probably communications tax revenue that'll be generated from this, as well as, I'm sure, real estate tax revenue, which we cannot consider in this CEP, but it's nice to know. I make the motion for a sort of resolution, ma'am.
All right. Thank you. Is there a second? All right. Is there any further discussion? If not, please cast your vote. And the motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. Next, number 10, is the public hearing regarding the petition of JB Property Group LLC to rezone approximately sixty-nine thousandths of an acre located at 1004 Court Street from B1 Limited Business District to B4C Urban Commercial District, conditional, to allow uses permitted in the B1 Limited Business District and/or up to four residential units in the existing building. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request, and that would be Mr. Martin. I believe I will turn to Councilmember Nelson prior to Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have to disclose that I represented Mr. Baker and his company when he acquired this property on Court Street, and therefore, I would have a technical conflict of interest and could not be unbiased, so I'll have to abstain.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Mr. Martin?
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, if the property is rezoned, the building would be rehabilitated into business uses and up to four apartment units. This area is recommended for downtown uses on the city's future land use map, and several months ago, council rezoned the adjacent property to the north. On-street parking exists in the area with opportunities for leasing in off-street lots. There is bus service available to the area with stops at both 10th and Church Streets and also 10th and Clay Street. A certificate of appropriateness for the construction of porch railings and a stairway at the rear of the structure was approved by the Historic Preservation Commission on June the 18th, and the planning commission conducted a public hearing and recommended approval of the rezoning with the voluntarily submitted proffer on August the 14th.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Martin. Is there anyone to make a presentation? Yes, please come forward.
Oh, sorry about that. Thank you. Good evening, members of council. My name is Amy Sype. I'm with AccuPoint Surveying and Design. We've been assisting Mr. Baker through the technical portion of this process. It's pretty straightforward. Mr. Baker is not adding to the existing facility on the exterior, simply seeking to rezone to have a little flexibility in the use. I commend him for saving the structure from dilapidation. He has already moved forward with some of the repairs on the porch, and if you saw it before, the Historic Preservation Committee approved it and he fixed it, it's night and day, so it's already seen improvement. Currently, he would like to use it for two residential units. And of course, moving forward, if there were the opportunity to add more, as in the proffer, up to four or potential business units, those would, of course, be subject to whatever current building and fire codes were applicable at the time that he sought to do that through the Building and Code Enforcement Department. It does fit the adjacent properties, and I think it's a good use for the structure. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sype. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Not having any opposition, there's no need for rebuttal. The public hearing is closed, and the matter rests with council. What is council's pleasure?
Yeah. Okay. No, I think it's probably a great use of the property. It's right next door to 1,000 Court Street, which is the one that's being restored also for, I think, six apartment units. So I think it's a great use of the property, and I would certainly support it.
Councilmember Wright?
I second what the Vice Mayor said, and would motion that we go ahead and approve it.
All right. Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Second.
All right. Thank you. Yes. Wright, yes. Thank you very much. The motion was made by Councilmember Wright, seconded by Vice Mayor Dolan. Okay. Any further discussion from either of you? All right. Councilmember Perrow?
Just a quick question, Mr. Martin. The only reason is conditionals because of the proffer, proffer number one?
Correct. Limiting the commercial uses to B1, which is what it's currently zoned now.
All right. So I'm going to walk a really fine line here, because I've got interest on Court Street, but I think this is a further indication of the changing use of Court Street, and I just don't think -- I believe the city should consider looking at the zoning of Court Street as we go forward. I mean, you've got two properties next door to each other that have done this. I think it's worth a look. I'm not going to say anymore about it, just because I feel like it would be improper.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilmember Perrow, any further discussion? All right. Please cast your vote. And the motion passes with one absentia. Thank you very much, and good luck with the project. Next is number 11, the public hearing regarding consideration of amending zoning ordinance section 35.2-11.3, applications concerning proffers. Amendments will conform to the provision of Virginia Code Annex -- is that for annexation section?
Correct.
Oh, anyway, section 15.2-2303.4, effective July 1, 2019. And I'll turn to Mr. Martin for this as well.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor, members of council, this is to keep our ordinance in compliance with the state code. This language was actually drafted by the city attorney. We're just moving it through the process. My read of the language actually gives actually more protection to the city, in that when the proffers are signed and submitted, that's evidence that they're reasonable and appropriate, so that gives us a little bit more protection, I believe. The planning commission did review this at its July 24th meeting, and after a public hearing, recommended approval.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Martin. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? All right. With no opposition, there's no rebuttal needed. The public hearing is closed, and the matter rests with council. Counsel, what is your preference? And Councilmember Perrow?
Madam Mayor, move the ordinance.
Second.
Thank you. The motion has been made in second. Do you have any further discussion?
Just, I'm not surprised that Mr. Irwin wrote this. It does provide additional protection from the city, and the fact that basically states when the developer, whomever, signs off on this, that they're, they can't contest it in the future, which was a risk that was posed earlier. So thank you, Mr. Irwin, for your service to the city and the Commonwealth. Very good.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will just say that a couple of years ago, at a state bar educational conference, the bar was discussing this issue, and I raised a question in the group indicating I was from Lynchburg, and the moderator said, "Oh, your city attorney is Walter Irwin. Well, he advises us on everything, so you have a very good city attorney." So Walter probably knows this as well as anybody in the state, this topic, and I thoroughly would approve of the product of his work.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there any further discussion? If not, please cast your vote. And the motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. Next is number 12, the public hearing regarding the consideration of an amended lease of city-owned property at 901 Church Street to community-appointed special advocate of Central Virginia, which is CASA, to increase the lease space. Staff will provide a brief summary, and I believe this is Ms. Hart. Thank you.
CASA currently occupies the first floor of Monument Terrace at 901 Church Street. The lease was first executed in 2012. At that time, CASA made $20,000 in improvements to the building, and we waived the $12,000 annual -- the rent in lieu of a $12,000 annual contribution. CASA recently requested 880 additional square feet that was formerly occupied by the city health nurse. I checked with the assessor. I got the market value for that space, the current market value for that space. It is included in your council packet. And again, CASA requests that we waive the rent in lieu of making an annual contribution. We also checked with city staff to be sure we didn't have additional use for this building. This building does have some very sensitive occupation on the third and second floor, so we're going to be very picky about who we put in this building, so this is a perfect fit for us.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Hart. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor?
Good evening. I'm Allison Stronza. I'm the executive director of CASA. I just want to first thank you guys for your support over the past six years. We've very much enjoyed the office space. It's perfect for us. Unfortunately, we are growing in size. We've increased our staff, so we are kind of crowded. We have staff members sharing office space, and we have our event supplies kind of spilling out into the hallway. It's not ideal for us, so we would really appreciate to have a little bit of extra space so our staff can, you know, have a little bit more privacy for meetings and interviews and discussions with our current volunteer advocates. We are on our 30th anniversary, and as you probably know, we advocate for children who have been abused or neglected. We have served more than 4,700 children in the past 30 years, and this year, we've grown so much, we've served 363 children, which is up, increased over the past two years drastically. We have been overwhelmed with cases, which, you know, is very unfortunate. All the counties that we currently serve have, are supporting us financially. With the exception of Appomattox, we will be requesting funding from them. We didn't need it, because we had an expansion grant from the Department of Criminal Justice Services, but we will be requesting their support this year. They do support us with free rent, and we also have free rent and internet info in Bedford County. And we also have available office space to use in Nelson County and Amherst if we need it. But Lynchburg is our central office. It's our headquarters. It's where most of our staff members are housed. Just thank you for your support.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition, or anyone else who would like to speak in favor? And anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? With no opposition, there's no rebuttal needed. Public hearing is closed, and the matter rests with council. Counsel, what is your pleasure? Councilmember Wright?
Madam Mayor, I would move the motion to approve. Second.
The motion has been made in second to approve this, and do you have any further discussion?
I would just say that CASA is an incredible organization doing really important work, and I think that to this extent, if the city can offer them extra help, so much the better, especially given what Ms. Hart said, that this is a perfect fit for this space.
All right. Oh, I'm very sorry. I understand. Thank you very much. This matter, and Councilmember Nelson, I will say that this matter did go to PDC, Physical Development Committee, and it is reviewed by the Physical Development Committee, so I will turn to our chair, Councilmember Perrow, for discussion. It was reviewed on August 13th.
Did the motion get a second?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Good. We did, the PDC did look at this, and the PDC's recommendation was to approve of this, so you guys are perfectly in line with our opinion. And when we looked at it, what you have in this building, as Ms. Hart pointed out, I'm not going to call it unique, but it's a government services building that has sensitive components in it, so you have to be very selective about the tenants that you do have in the space. That being said, we're not going to rent out the space just to anybody. And we're only talking about 800 square feet, which is pretty hard to rent out, anyway. And you cannot isolate this space by utilities, so it's a cost we're already carrying. Previously, the CASA was an external service provider, which was carried in our budget, and there was an annual contribution to CASA. So what we're talking about this was we dropped that payment in lieu of the rent over there. This is a small increase in the space that does not have any fiscal impact on the city. It's a sunk cost, and it's a great service, so it seemed to be just worthwhile and fair. So that's it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. And Councilmember Nelson, please go ahead with your comments as well.
Okay. Well, obviously, a second wasn't necessary, but I do want to comment that CASA certainly provides a very strategic and positive and critically needed service to our courts, to our social services department, to our children, to our families, and having them here is a great benefit. Likewise, in addition to what Councilmember Perrow said about the building and the functionality of it, that location is right next to the courthouses downtown, so it's a perfect site, and the city is, receives a great deal of benefit by having them downtown and working with all of our services and our families. So, support it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. The motion has been made. Councilmember Helgason?
Just got a question. Ms. Allison, can you come up here?
You had mentioned that, you know, this is your central office, and you represent other children in various courts in different counties. How much of the work is done in Lynchburg? Like, for Lynchburg children, as opposed to?
As far as the number of children served?
I guess the percentage or the number, just to... I guess the percentage or the number of, just to...
So this past fiscal year that just ended, June thirtieth, we had, let's see, a hundred and fifty-four of the children were in Bedford, so that was our highest caseload last year, and ninety-four were in Lynchburg, and the rest were divided. I think Campbell County and Appomattox were our next two highest.
So all this, and you said that you are getting other contributions from the other, the other counties?
We do. And we get twelve, I believe, twelve thousand dollars from Bedford, plus free office space, utilities, phone, internet as well.
Okay. Thank you.
But we only have two staff members in Bedford.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. The motion's been made and supported by the Physical Development Committee, and if there's no further discussion, please cast your vote.
We call for the vote.
Cast your vote. Thank you very much. And the motion has been made and approved, so thank you and for the work you do. Thank you so much. Next is the public hearing regarding the request of Virginia Department of Transportation for easements and additional right-of-way and Appalachian Power Company for agreements for utility poles along Route twenty-nine on city-owned property, the Lynchburg Regional Airport in Campbell County. Staff will provide a summary of the request, and Mr. Courtney.
Yes. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. The easements and the right-of-way for this are necessary in order to accommodate a new bridge that VDOT will be constructing on northbound Route twenty-nine, about a quarter mile south of the main terminal entrance. Oh, good. It's up there. The main terminal entrance at Lynchburg Regional Airport. Most of the land, or at least a majority of the land needed, is located across Route twenty-nine. If you go and look at the northern part of the photo here, on the right, where the drawing, where the wording is and the arrows are, that is actually a, some, a nine, a point-nine-six acre parcel that is owned by the city and is used for the detention basin and the stormwater runoff from a portion or a half of the terminal parking lot. So there was an existing pole nearby across the street. We're gonna, there's gonna be one that's relocated, and there's one that is gonna be added, and then another right-of-way in order to accommodate a wider road for VDOT as part of that railway, the new bridge that they're gonna be constructing. The airport, we've, we've reviewed the locations. We've worked with city engineering and with VDOT, and the airport has no objection to it. We've negotiated an acceptable offer. We're able to get a little bit more out of it than they originally offered, and the project was reviewed by the Physical Development Committee this morning. We're just awaiting some of the final, one final detail from, as far as getting FAA approval. Most of those have already been accomplished. We're waiting for the final language to be able to have that reviewed by the FAA that includes required FAA language in the deed.
Thank you. Mr., is that, you've ended? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Courtney. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? And with no opposition, there's no rebuttal needed, so public hearing is closed, and the matter rests with council. And this was reviewed by the Physical Development Committee today, September tenth, so I will turn to our chair, Council Member Perro.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Physical Development Committee did review this. We're talking about a de minimis amount of land associated with this transfer. However, I want to commend the, the Director, Mr. Courtney, and staff for negotiating a decent compensation for this acquisition, because you just heard Mr. Courtney talk about how much staff effort it took. Not only is this a local approval, it's a federal approval as well, and you have to jump through all the hoops of the FAA and so forth. So it did take a significant amount of staff time. The compensation at which they negotiated seems to be commensurate with that time, you know. Otherwise, we're talking about a telephone pole at a, at a stormwater basin. So thank you, Mr. Courtney, for, for making sure that the staff time was compensated for, and this measure, and the Physical Development Committee recommends that this be approved by council, and I make that as a motion behalf of the committee, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you. There's no need for a second. If there's no further discussion, please cast your vote. And the motion passes seven to zero, and thank you. Thank you. Next is general business. This section includes general items of new business. Number fourteen is consideration of introducing a resolution to amend the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen general fund budget and appropriate one million four hundred fifteen thousand two hundred seventeen dollars with resources from the assigned fund balance health insurance reserve. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request, and I'll turn to Mr. Low.
Good evening. Madam Mayor, council members, I would like to request that the funds that you mentioned, one million four hundred fifteen thousand two hundred seventeen dollars, be appropriated with resources from the assigned fund balance health insurance reserve. This is the second year in which we have come up short in our estimated expenditures for the health fund. Last year, at about this time, or perhaps a little later, we discussed the fact that we were going to increase the rates for the cost share for employees, and so we did that. One thing that we have been challenged by is that when the increases come, our health plan year is not in sync with our budget. The health plan year runs the calendar year, so we make the increase in rates for the, the cost share that's passed on to the employees in January, but then the amount that comes from the city isn't implemented until the following fiscal year, so the following July. So even though we budget for that, we, we go half-year without that increase. So we have met, and we have come up with a strategy to remedy that, but for the time being, we did, did come up short. And so, again, I would ask that these funds be appropriated, and I would be glad to ask, answer any questions or attempt to answer any questions that you might have.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions of Mr. Low right now? Council Member Helgason?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I, I think, I understand that, the timing of it, but, you know, when you have the rate increase, and if you should do it, I mean, I'm sure there's ways that can be implemented a whole lot sooner than waiting another year or fiscal year. So this isn't good news by anyone. It's when we see our reserves being depleted, and then obviously, even with this reserve being depleted, they're still, still gonna be a shortfall. I mean, that's, this isn't a very good situation that we've got to really, and I thought I brought items up about this, when we do have emergencies that happen, we need to plan as best as we can and not spend everything, because things like this happen, whether it be a tornado, whether it be a deratio, whether it be unplanned claims for health insurance. I mean, that's, you know, hopefully, in, in the future, you'll be able to get the, the funds in there from the contributions from the employees, and we, as a council, will do as best as we can. When we have the ability to have reserves, we'll recognize that there's always something. I mean, it's always something, and this is another always something. And so I realize at budget time, we're kind of removed from these, these sundry things that pop up every couple of years that are sometimes pretty big, but the best we can do is, is learn and say, "Let's build up our reserves." I mean, it's, that's why we thought the general fund, the reserve, the, the general fund could be increased. You know, we've got lots of issues and things happen, so sad to see this, but hopefully, we can learn from it and really plan going forward.
Thank you. Council Member Perro?
I'd do some questions as well. Now, not being on finance, I'm trying to recall exactly how this is structured. So there is a, in the general fund, we do have, we have a line item, I guess, for health, health insurance.
Health insurance and health insurance reserve.
Right. So that, what is the amount that's, what was the budget amount for health insurance?
Really, the bottom line here, quite frankly, is that we have had two bad claims year, claim years in a row, which is very unusual. To that point, we had a conference call yesterday with our health insurance consultant, Matt Smith, to talk about how we can remedy this in the future. And I asked him to look into actually finding a third-party auditor that might be able to come in and audit our claims, because we know there have been billing issues. And the second part is to help teach our employees how to be educated and help, help advocates for themselves. I mean, having had some very recent and ongoing experience, I can tell you, it is a maze, and I know you've all had similar experiences, and if, I mean, I'm far from a rocket scientist, but I consider myself to be a pretty educated woman, and when I'm challenged by reading hospital bills that are coming in the mail every day, I'm quite confident that a large majority of our employees are having the same challenges. So we need to do a better job internally educating our employees and how to be their best advocates.
All right. So, so if there's thirteen million, plus or minus, in, in the health insurance, and then, so we're holding how much in the reserve? Ten percent? So I think we maybe had, we should have a longer-term conversation about the level of reserve that we hold.
Yes, we agree.
Because you're tapping, tapping everything here. But, yeah, Council Member Helgason's right. It's bad news.
And it's very difficult to predict. It's very difficult to predict.
Yeah. But, I mean, our backs against the wall on this. We can't do anything else. So basically, we're gonna dump the entire reserve into, into the, into the, into the current, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the resolution now. It's appropriated with resource, the, the general fund, we're gonna dump our entire reserve into the general fund. All right. So, Madam Mayor, I move the resolution begrudgingly.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Council Member Wilder. Further discussion? Council Member Perro? Council Member Wilder?
I know you mentioned we had two bad years. Has it been a pattern? Or is it normally we don't use the reserve? What happens normally?
Yeah, so we've dealt with this issue with the schools recently as well, and it is typical for, just generally, for organizations to have a bad claims year, and then you have a couple of good years, then you have a bad year, and then a couple of good years. And we've had these two bad years in a row, and that is very unusual. So I wanted, I want us to dig deeper into what's going on behind all of this.
Okay. So, okay, as you plan going forward, whether we increase the reserve or what the consultant may suggest, is that, that's plan?
We actually, in our conversation with Matt Smith yesterday, we talked about increase, projected increases for January two thousand and twenty and January two thousand and twenty-one to help build the reserves, and there will be additional costs to both employees and to, and to the city.
Well, thank you.
Council Member Nelson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just follow up on that. So two years ago, we had a bad claims year, and last year, we adjusted the rates as well as the amount that goes into the reserve. Then last year, we had another bad year. Is there any indications at this point in this fiscal year that this year, in spite of what we did to try to remedy that, that we're gonna have another bad year? Are there indicators that they can measure that?
So with the fiscal year, I mean, we're, we're just early into the fiscal year. Our, the national trend over the past ten years has been about a ten percent increase per year. Over the past, I think, four years, our, three years since we've been with Anthem, our trend has been about four point six. So we actually are about less than half of the national trend. So I would say we don't anticipate that, but it's, there's always a lag behind as, as to what claims you, you have as data and history that you're working from, and so we're, we're barely getting into the new fiscal year. But, you know, certainly at this point, we, we don't anticipate a bad year. We've had two, two bad years in a row, but I can't predict the future, so I can't assure you of that.
Should be interesting to see what the consultant says. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Council Member Helgason?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You, you mentioned as far as the, I lost my train of thought. I, I'm wondering about the, like, the plan design. So you had mentioned as far as you think there maybe ought to some of the claims, and so if, basically, if our plan, since we're self-insured, doesn't pay the claims, and there's a claim, that means the employee would pay the claim. So you're, you're thinking that some of the claims may have been paid inadvertently, or, well, a possibility?
I think it is worth a second look by a professional auditor.
And so now, did the administration change over the last few years? I know, I knew we used to be with Piedmont or something, and...
We changed to Anthem three years ago.
Okay. Now, they do the administration of claims?
Yes.
They do the administration of claims, and then we do the payment for the big claims? I mean, because we're self-insured, right?
Well, actually, we make, we make two types of payments. We pay an admin fee, so there's a headcount fee each month, whether that, that contract member has any expenses incurred or not. And then, in addition to that, then the actual claims that are, are processed, then we pay those.
So Anthem is doing the processing of the claims?
Yes.
And so if there's a claim, they typically don't just willy-nilly pay extra claims, so I wouldn't think, you know, they, they don't, unless we have a different contract with them, but I think they usually, most insurance companies pay the, they deny the claim until you appeal it twelve times, and then they'll pay it. So I don't think they, it usually doesn't go on that end, but maybe.
Well, we, we certainly would, would like to think that Anthem is very reputable and professional in the adjudication of the claims. We have had exposure to, you know, personal experiences where it causes us to question, you know, the, the appropriate adjudication of the claims, and so that's, I think that's what Bonnie is referring to, and it's not just her recent personal exposure, but others as well.
Is there anything on the actual design of the plan that we're, that we're doing that we could maybe do differently?
We do not anticipate that for this coming year. We have tweaked the plan significantly in the past few years, adjusting the deductible and, and, you know, certain coverages, and so we did do that two years ago, and we do not anticipate doing that this coming year. Just increase the rates.
You don't anticipate that, and even though we're, we've gone through all the reserves? I would think that you would kind of look at, I mean, we've gone through a lot of reserves in the last two years.
Right. I understand that.
I would think we'd at least kind of have some tertiary analysis of the design, but...
Right.
So we're in our last year with Anthem?
I'm sorry?
That, we're in our last year with Anthem's con...
With current contract.
With the current, with the current contract.
But, I mean, we can change our plan design, right?
Yes.
At any, at the plan year, the anniversary year?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And so that, that I think we should probably be looking at. I mean, just my take, especially when we've gone through so much in the reserves. We're going through the entire reserve, and we still, if I'm reading this correctly, we'll take, we've paid all the money that we said, as Council Member Perro said, the thirteen million. We're now taking the reserve, spending that, and we're still short.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So with that, I think we ought to at least sharpen our pencil somewhat around a plan design issue, so. At least have that as an option.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Council Member Wilder has a question.
I think it is with the audit piece, you can kind of look at some of that, and look at some of the issues and see why it is the claim is higher than normal. So that's a good thing. Also, also, a second, last little point, though you mentioned like an annual, like a lag. Is there a six-month period where you kind of review it to see if we're on target or not? Is it part of... Is it part of the normal process?
Normally, what we do is about the sixth month of the plan year, then we look at that experience, that claims experience, to start projecting toward the next year, yes.
So can it tell you if you're on target or not? If you're going to have an issue or not?
Yes, sir.
Maybe you can alert us even sooner, so you know, we may have an issue here, because it's higher than normal, particularly the six-month period, you know?
That is correct.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I guess one last thing, which, you know, obviously, we're in Lynchburg, so we typically probably have kind of a cornered market on healthcare, for the most part, which, that's why I think it's, you know, Kathy Byron had pushed a bill to allow for competition, which I strongly encourage. But short of that, hopefully, with that ability to look at what we're being charged, I read a pretty in-depth article in the paper this morning about the health plan in UVA, as far as the billing, that was like double the averages, and things are being paid. So hopefully, we'll look at, we'll be able to look at, you know, the providers as far as the charges. I guess Anthem agrees with the, you know, what that charge will be, and that the payment will be if they're a participating provider, but I, hopefully, we're not getting excess billed, so glad you're looking at it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. The motion has been made in second. Is there any further discussion? All right, thank you. Please cast your vote. And the motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. Next is consideration of adopting an ordinance to amend Section 21 dot two dot thirty-one of the City Code regarding solid waste collection and disposal to reflect the decal fees approved by City Council as part of the adopted fiscal year 2020 operating budget. Staff will provide a brief summary, and that's Ms. Hart. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. As a part of the 2020 budget, we increased the annual fees from forty to fifty dollars annually for a thirty-two gallon receptacle, and from eighty to one hundred and ten annually for a sixty-four gallon receptacle. Those fees are noted in our solid waste collection ordinance, so we need to change our ordinance to reflect those new fees.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hart. Since we've already been billed, yeah. I was too near to say.
Since you've already been billed, I think that would be nice.
It would be good to match it.
She quickly takes a seat.
All right. Thank you. Is there any discussion, or can I have a motion?
Move for approval.
A second. The motion has been made in second. Do you have any further conversation? Anyone else? Councilmember Helgason?
Since you guys already alluded to it, it's, you know, I think this was pretty, I think it was rolled out pretty crazy. I mean, you know, basically, you get a notice that says the price is going up thirty-seven percent, the next, you know, and it's due in five days or fifteen days. I mean, it's due pretty quick. So that rollout wasn't, maybe there was things ahead of time, but I, that's, I had lots of people call, and they said, you know, this isn't a good design or a good layout, and then, secondly, add an insult to injury is a thirty-seven percent increase, and I recognize it hadn't been raised in a while, but somebody gets a bill, or gets a notice that the bill's going up, and then it's due actually in-house in a few days, so.
I don't believe it's due until the end of the month.
Right.
There was a notice that I got, it was due by the eighteenth of September, the letter I got, or something like that, somewhere around there. You had to mail the thing back by the eighteenth.
Oh, yeah, the information.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So, I mean, it wasn't, and I just got it, so it was two weeks, maybe?
Yeah, we sent out, we sent out the notices probably the end of August, I will admit that, and so they are due the eighteenth, however, that's to give billings and collections some time to get them to you by October first. You can buy them online, and that's actually our preferred way of people buying decals. We did start a campaign, a PR campaign in July. We started putting things in the City Source and trying to get the word out on Facebook, City Source, and we sent a water bill insert, so, you know, we did the best that we could with the public relations piece.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hart. And the motion has been made in second. If there's no further discussion, please cast your vote. And the motion passes six with one no. Thank you. Next is consideration of adopting a resolution to approve a change order for forty-five thousand three hundred and seventy-eight dollars for the completion of the demolition phase of the Police Department Headquarters project, and again, Ms. Hart will provide a summary. Thank you.
As you know, we're in process of demoing the Greater Lynchburg Transit Administration buildings, and preparation for the Police Department Headquarters. As a part of our investigation, we had previously identified two underground storage tanks, and we had allowed for about five hundred cubic yards of material that might need to be removed. As we worked through that, we actually found a concrete crawl space and two additional storage tanks, additional asbestos, and some unsuitable soils. That is to be expected when you do a demolition like this. This is not a change of our scope, is, this is what is to be expected at a job like that. That encompassed our first change order. After that, we actually ended up finding forty-two hundred additional cubic yards of soil, and we actually found three more tanks, so we've got a total of ten tanks that we've got to get, or seven tanks that we have to get rid of. We actually have a unit price in our bid, so that we, that as we find these things, we know exactly what they're going to cost. And again, we had the, we had the unit prices in there to protect the city from additional costs.
Thank you, Ms. Hart. And I will turn to our Chair of the Physical Development Committee, Councilmember Perrow, as this went today to PDC.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We did review this at PDC, and disappointed to see that it is, in fact, exceeding the twenty-five percent threshold. And I will say, the staff did a good job when they bid the work to include the unit prices, which then fixed the prices for any additional work in a competitive manner. And if that weren't, was not the case, then this change order would have been negotiated, and it likely would have been a whole lot more. So I think staff did protect the city's liability on this. Whenever you're dealing with remediation in underground tanks, and demolition, and a building that's been there for decades, you don't know what you're going to find. The case in point were the two additional tanks that they just recently found. So as much as I don't like it, the, PDC recommended this be approved, it's necessary to be approved. The good news is that this eliminates the vast majority of unknowns that'll be on the site. So the rest of it is new construction, the unknowns are out of the way, so I don't believe this would be a trend going forward. So, Madam Mayor, I'm going to make this, make the motion on behalf of PDC that this change order number two be approved.
All right, thank you. There's no need for a second. Is there further discussion? Councilmember Helgason?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A few weeks or months, months ago, there was some extra money that we're appropriating, and I suggested we take the whole amount and appropriate that.
How many were coming back?
Help me with that amount.
The residual money left from bluff walk?
Yep. And so we didn't put it to a new program, a new housing.
We had got it, it's still just sitting.
How much was that? Roughly? Hundred thousand?
Two hundred and fifty thousand.
So, the good thing of that is, now, we do, since we didn't spend it, which was very good, we can now say, at least we have that money that we can utilize for this, and I think that's a good thing that we did as a council. We didn't spend that money, even though we were tempted. That's one thing we didn't, which is great. Now we have the money to help pay for this change order, so, great.
All right, thank you. Is there any further discussion? Please cast your vote. And the motion passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. Next, number seventeen, is consideration of introducing a resolution to amend the fiscal year 2019 CSA fund budget to appropriate seventy-five thousand in additional funding for increases in the CSA program, specifically increases in special education placements in private day schools and residential special education facilities, with resources from the CSA fund balance and the Virginia Department of Education, and Ms. Roster will make this presentation.
Mayor Tweedy, you've outlined it very nicely. Tonight, I am seeking to have appropriated an additional seventy-five thousand dollars, an additional funding due to increases in our CSA program, specifically increases in our special education day school placements. This has been going on for a couple of years now. I think when I do my quarterly reports, I let, I've been reporting these increases in our special education day school placements. So from 2018 to 2019, we saw a twenty-two percent increase in those placements, and it really is hard to plan and budget for that. You know, the level of need that our schoolchildren, our experiences, is indicated in these day school placements. So we do have, we're looking to appropriate the seventy-five thousand dollars with resources coming from our CSA fund balance, as well as the Department of Education on the state level. The CSA money rests with the Department of Ed on the state level, so that's why it's coming from the Department of Ed. No additional general fund dollars is required for this appropriation.
All right, thank you very much. And thank you, Ms. Roster, for the presentation. Any questions for Ms. Roster? Councilmember Wilder?
A CSA fund from the state, correct? Is that, or is it from the city?
They're state funds with a local match, with a city match.
Okay. So our match is the...
Our match would be the...
The twenty thousand?
Yes, correct.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Twenty thousand dollars, which will come from our CSA fund balance.
All right, thank you. No further questions? Madam rest with council, and what is your pleasure?
Madam Mayor, I move that we adopt the motion, or the resolution.
The motion has been made in second. Do you have any further discussion on it?
No, ma'am. I just thank Ms. Roster again for the presentation earlier today, and for the hard work of her team.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor Dola? All right, no further discussion. Please cast your vote. All right, the motion passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. Next, before I go into the next section, which is a consideration of a closed meeting, I'm going to turn to Councilmember Wright for a special recognition.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's special indeed. So Walter Irwin, in addition to being an esteemed member of the bar, he is also now a grandfather twice over, and he has a new grandson, Carter, and so council got together and got him a little something. So here you are. Congratulations.
Thank you all very much. That is very nice.
I wanted to use that.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, thank you. I thought that we needed to do that, so thank you very much. I missed it earlier. Next is consideration of a closed meeting to discuss appointments to the Building Code Appeals Board, Business Development Center Board, Economic Development Authority, Redevelopment and Housing Authority, and Social Services Advisory Board, and consideration of a closed meeting for discussion and consideration of the city managers and the city attorneys' performance evaluations pursuant to Section two dot two dash thirty-seven eleven, A1 of the Code of Virginia. May I have a motion to go into a closed meeting?
So moved.
Thank you. And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
So, Madam Mayor, just for clarification, that was a combination of items eighteen and nineteen, which would be one recorded in one vote and one action.
Yes, thank you very much. And Councilmember Craig, I mean, I'm sorry, Ms. Craig has that. Thank you. Thank you very much.
And they're two different items, probably for closed meeting appointments?
Yes.
Probably two different laws that should be highlighted there. Are they all under the same number?
They're both under the same section. They both fit under appointments and personnel matters.
All right, thank you. May I please have your vote, if there's no further discussion? Thank you very much. We are now in closed session.